Let Planning Commission back to order here, and as always, I'll call on Ms. Fox to read our next docketed item, please.
Easy seventeen dash zero two zero. Application has been filed by PI Tower Development LLC and Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless for approval to construct a one hundred and seventy-foot telecommunications tower on point four three one acres located at the ninety-one-hundred block of Holly Gibson Road Crestwood in unincorporated Oldham County.
All righty, thank you for that. And Ms. Alvey, I'll call on you again to introduce the docket, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning again. Amy Alvey, Oldham County Planning and Development Services. This is a request for a cell tower to be located at ninety-one-hundred Holly Gibson Road in Crestwood. The overall site is eleven acres. The area being leased is eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. The property is owned R2 Residential and CO1 Conservation. This shows the existing zoning of the property. Everything in yellow is R2. This green area here is CO1, and then the lighter green area, that is the one-hundred-year floodplain. In this zoning classification, minimum lot area is twelve thousand square feet. Again, the applicant is leasing eighteen thousand, so they are above the minimum lot area. If this land was to ever be developed, we have confirmed with Oldham County Environmental Authority that it would be required to connect to sewers, so it meets the minimum lot area of twelve thousand square feet in the case it was ever future-developed. Again, this is the area view. This is Holly Gibson Road here, and then Francis Avenue there. This is an area view. Driveways are in the hashed area, and the gray items are buildings or structures. You'll see there's an existing home here, an existing home here, and then there is a barn located on the rear track. The planning office was officially noticed on May first of 2017 to request to be on the June twenty-seventh, 2017 agenda, making the sixty-day ruling deadline June thirtieth of 2017. Notices were mailed to adjoining property owners by the applicant via certified mail on May first of 2017, and notices of the Planning Commission hearing were mailed to the adjoining property owners on June seventh of 2017. All documentation required by Division three forty antenna towers for telecommunications services has been provided by the applicant and is included in your packet that you received from staff. The applicants are proposing to construct a cell tower that would be one hundred and sixty feet, one hundred and sixty-five feet tall with a five-foot-tall lightning arrestor attached to the top for a total height of one hundred and seventy feet. The plan also includes a concrete foundation and shelter or cabinets to house radio electronics, electronic equipment and other equipment. The applicant is proposing a twenty-foot-wide ingress and egress and utility easement on the north side of the leased area. The access would be from Holly Gibson Road and have a gravel parking, have gravel parking with a gravel turnaround. The applicant is proposing an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with three rows of barbed wire atop for a total height of nine feet to secure the site. And landscaping is shown under Tab B, Page C three of the application, which outlines the twenty-foot-wide required landscape buffer. The applicant is proposing to plant six-foot-tall evergreen trees, ten feet on center, with continuous hardwood mulch. The mature height of the trees is a minimum of twenty feet. The vertical profile sketch of the proposed tower shows no lighting on the top of the tower and also shows location of three antennas for future carriers to co-locate. The applicant has prepared and submitted a geotechnical engineering report, which is also in your binder under Tab D, which indicates that the two test boring samples were done at the base of the proposed tower. There is a caveat that says that when a tower is taller than the distance from its base to the nearest property line, the applicant must furnish the commission with a certification from an engineer registered in the Commonwealth of Kentucky that the tower will withstand winds of seventy miles per hour. The proposed tower is located approximately two hundred and fifty-seven feet from the north property line and one hundred and twenty-seven feet from the south property line. The certification is located behind Tab C in your binder. The application states the proposed foundation plan is designed for a basis wind of eighty-nine miles per hour with no ice and thirty miles per hour with three-quarter-inch radial ice. This is looking into the proposed site at ninety-one-hundred Holly Gibson Road, which is the existing gravel drive. This is the south view, looking towards Ash Avenue. And this is the required posting sign as well that the applicant has on the property. This is the south adjoining property owner. You'll see I did a little vicinity map to give you an ideal location. Highlighted in blue is this property here, so this is the property located to the south. This is the east view, which would be across the street. It's an open farmland or pasture. This is the north view going back towards Crestwood. This is the north adjoining property owner. This is the overall site plan. The property is compiled of two tracts. They are highlighted there in red. Then highlighted in blue is actually the eighteen thousand square feet plus or minus of the leased area that is proposed. The access easement is highlighted there in gray from Holly Gibson Road. This is just an aerial overview of the site plan placed on an aerial that the applicant provided in your packet as well to kind of give you a little bit more of a foundation of what it looks like on the existing property. This is a zoomed-in version of the detailed site plan. This is a little more zoomed-in version of the detailed site plan that shows the cell tower monopole there, the existing, or the proposed concrete pad and generator location, and then these are the sites for the future carriers, their equipment. This is a tower elevation. The cell tower itself is one hundred and sixty-five feet tall, and then at the top there is a five-foot lightning arrestor there, so a total height of one hundred and seventy This is the site plan with the distance to the nearest residential structure. You'll see that the closest residential structure is the property owner that is leasing. The area to the applicant is two hundred and ten feet. And then this is the distance to property lines. The landscape requirements, the outside perimeter of Section three forty oh eight oh, Item two, states that the outside perimeter of the security fence surrounding the antenna tower should be provided with a landscape buffer. The buffer is to be a minimum of twenty feet in width and can contain a continuous evergreen screen that will achieve a minimum of twenty feet in height. This is the landscape plan that was in your packet as well, that outlines the proposed landscape plan, planting of the trees. In reference to the comprehensive plan, if you look under Goal E two, Item five, it says new telecommunications towers should be located and designed to minimize impacts to existing trees and vegetation, as well as visually, visual and land use impacts permit new telecommunications towers and utility substations provided that. A more suitable site is not available. Co-location is not feasible. The proposed facility is cited to minimize the visual impact on adjacent areas, and vegetative screening fence in Birmingham and other measures are provided to minimize the view of the facility from adjoining roads and property. The applicant has provided in your binders the site selection process and the explanation for the co-location as well. And then, under the comprehensive plan, Goal B I one, promote business and industrial development that is compatible with Oldham County's vision. If you look down there, the B I dash one dash four says Oldham County will facilitate broadband infrastructure and telecommunications availability for residential governmental and business segments of the county. And that is all that I have.
All righty, Ms. Alvey, thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions for staff? Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representative and others in support of the application. Mr. Pike, I would assume that would be you?
Good assumption, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. For the recorded record, my name is David Pike. I'm the principal with Pike Legal Group, P L L C, PO Box three six nine, Shepherdsville, Kentucky. The rest of my contact data is of record in the somewhat voluminous documentation that we have been submitting to your staff over the past few weeks. If I could, Amy, if you could assist, what button do I push that does not result in something saying challenger, go throttle up?
Aaron.
All right, there we go. Good.
Mr. Pike, we need to get those, your folks sworn in that will testify.
Okay, please. Everybody who's with me.
Are you all in support of, or, okay?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Okay, Ms. Fox?
Please solemnly swear to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. If they're with me, they'd better be in support.
I understand.
In any event, my contact data is PO Box three six nine, Shepherdsville, Kentucky. It is a pleasure to appear before you again, and in particular in my line of work, it is a pleasure to appear before you when almost everyone in the room came with me today. And I think that's a testimony in a densely populated area like this to the very hard work that our entire team put into trying to locate a site that would minimize opposition and minimize community impacts. We can't always achieve that, but I think we've done an extraordinary job of it in this instance. I have a lengthy PowerPoint presentation with your permission, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to do my very best to expedite that based on the apparent lack of opposition to this proposal today. A few things I do want to make sure that I do. First of all, I want to thank both Jim and Amy for their tireless efforts. We have burned up the email traffic, written communications, and telephone conferences with them. They have been gracious and professional in helping us achieve an application which meets all of your requirements for which no waivers and variances are required. I also would like to take just a moment to introduce the people who are with me here today, if I could, and if they could stand as I call their name, just so they can be identified. Of course, we have our property owners, Ozima and Willie Knight, if you folks could stand. We have their legal counsel, Beech Craig Mile, who's here today as well. We have Gordon Snyder, our radio frequency design engineer for Verizon Wireless. Bill Grigsby, professional engineer, who's an expert in cell tower safety. We have Marshall Slagel, who's a fellow with the American Institute of Certified Planners, and Glenn Katz, who's our professional appraiser. All of those experts have, of course, submitted written documentation to you that's available for your review and has all been prefilled. You should have before you the original binder that was prepared by staff that, as I understand, was a copy of our application or relevant sections thereof. Also, I distributed a supplemental binder with a few additional items in it that I will refer to during my presentation. If any of you do not have a, both binders, let me know, and we'll be glad to distribute an additional one at this juncture. Of course, we voluntarily waived confidentiality in connection with this application so that the public has had full access to this documentation since the day it was filed. As Amy indicated, this proposal is for a one hundred and sixty-five-foot monopole with a five-foot lightning arrestor. Important to note, this does not have to be lit under Federal Aviation Administration standards, so there will be no blinking light associated with it. It's two hundred and ten feet from the nearest residential structure. Of course, that's owned by our property owners. The next nearest residential structure that is not owned by them is approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet away, which is an exemplary level of setbacks, far exceeding those required by your ordinances. I think it's also, and of course, everything Amy had in her presentation on setbacks was accurate, but I'd like to kind of expand on that a little bit, since some of those setbacks are from property that is actually owned by our property owners. So, north yard, your required setback is fifty. We achieved two hundred and fifty-seven. East yard, your required setback is fifty. Our tower is setback seventy-two feet from the adjoining parcel, but that's owned by our property owners. If you go to the next property in that direction, it's approximately five hundred feet. And west yard, fifty. We achieved four hundred and forty-two. South yard, required setbacks fifty. We achieved a hundred and twenty-seven. So, again, I'm not saying that, you know, that this tower will be invisible, but in terms of setback criteria, we have far exceeded the rules of the game that you have specified in your own regulations. We've, of course, included extensive documentation in Exhibit N of our filed application documenting a critical need for enhanced service in this area and for capacity offloading. This is a prosperous community. This is a very high-growth area, and we have to stay ahead of that curve because we take our obligations to the community and to our customers very seriously. If there are any questions in connection with that radio frequency need, if you're a Verizon Wireless customer and have tried to make calls in this area, I think you get the issue, but we've documented it carefully in our report and have our expert witness here today to address the issue as well, if needed. As you are well accustomed to from prior cell tower cases, since we have to integrate this site into the existing network, there's a defined area within which we have to place any new facility that's going to be deployed. That is referred to as a search area. That search area is included at Exhibit M of our application and is depicted on this slide. It's worth noting, just to kind of jump ahead, there are no existing towers within that search area. So, we've thoroughly exhausted any potential co-location alternatives in lieu of the construction of a new facility. We've included a detailed site selection report documenting how we went about locating this site. Again, we think we've chosen not just a good site, but the optimal site within that search area, helping us to achieve the level of buffering and setbacks that we've been able to. The nearest tower is over point seven five miles outside of the search area. We are on that tower. So, the next tower beyond that is a mile beyond the search area. So, there's no question that we've exhausted all available co-location alternatives, thereby justifying legally under KRS Chapter one hundred our proposal today. In addition, again, kind of expediting here, our site acquisition agents, of course, have documented in their report thoroughly the location of those other facilities that we're already on. We've included a planning report from Marshall Slagel. For those of you who are not familiar with Marshall, he is one of the few fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. He had over thirty-five years of service on the staff of what was then the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission. He is the only six-time president of the Kentucky Chapter of the American Planning Association. I am fond of saying, if there was a Mount Rushmore of planning, his head would clearly be on it. And, of course, his report indicates that this is in full compliance with your regulations and meets the requirements of your comprehensive plan as well. Property valuation is not a justification for turning down a cell tower, but, having said that, it is an issue that often comes up in public hearings. Based on that, we've submitted a report by Glenn Katz, who's here today. He has over twenty-five years of appraisal experience. He's a certified general real property appraiser in Kentucky. He holds every professional designation and certification that is offered by the Appraisal Institute, and I mean every one. And, of course, he's qualified to offer an expert testimony in this case. His current state offices with the Kentucky Chapter of the Appraisal Institute include that he serves as vice president, and he has been education committee chairman since 2008. He finds that this facility will have no adverse effect on real estate values in the vicinity. Structural considerations are dealt with by William Grigsby, P E. He's a licensed professional engineer in Kentucky with extensive experience with cell towers and tall structures in general. He finds that this will, that this facility is over-engineered based on federal standards for a zero fall, for a zero-foot-fall-zone radius. In a bit of engineering flourish, he indicates that in the event of a catastrophic tornado, this would likely be the only thing left standing in the entire vicinity, since it is built to a higher standard than any required commercial or residential building codes in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Tower and foundation designs are included at Exhibit C. They are, of course, stamped by a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. The same thing can be said for geotechnical reports included at Exhibit D, in which we did subsurface borings to make certain that our foundation design matched the tower design and could all be developed in a fashion that would meet the zero-foot-fall-zone radius standards that we requested the companies meet. Floodplain information, I think was already documented by Amy, but, of course, although there's floodplain at the rear of this property, we're outside of it, and none of our roadway goes through it. Tower height, this is worthwhile pausing for a moment to make sure that we got our arms around. I would not be so bold as to say this is a short structure. It is not. Having said that, though, in relative terms, it is. There are fourteen FCC-registered towers constructed in Oldham County today. All fourteen of them are taller than this tower. The average height of registered towers is over three hundred and seventy-seven feet, which is more than twice the height of this tower. Average registered towers in Oldham County is over two hundred feet taller than our proposal, over two hundred feet. So, although it's tall, it's short by cell tower standards ultimately. And it's short enough, in this instance, that it does not have to be lit, which we, of course, we can't always achieve that, but when we can, it's our view that, in general, the public prefers that, since it makes it less obtrusive at night. In just a couple of slides, we've kind of listed your requirements and where we meet them, and I think your staff has readily acknowledged that we've met all of your filing requirements and state requirements in connection with our copious documentation. Notice requirements have been met, as Amy indicated. I'm going to take just a few minutes to talk about federal and state telecommunications law. You have very able legal counsel, and you should always rely on their advice. It is incumbent upon me, however, to take a few minutes to talk about our view of the law, because ultimately, these cases are very different from any other type of zoning case that you will consider, since there is a unique set of statutes at the state level and at the federal level that govern these types of deployments and place certain limitations on decision-makers regarding what they can and what they cannot consider. First of all, it's important to note that ultimately, an application like this can only be denied based on substantial evidence. The following things, based on federal case precedent in the Sixth Circuit, are not substantial evidence. Lay opinion is not. Unsupported opinion is not. Expressions of concerns with aesthetics are not. Claims that a tower is unsightly or aesthetic concerns is not substantial evidence and cannot serve as a basis for a cell tower disapproval. General concerns that a tower is ugly or unwanted cannot serve as a basis for a cell tower turn-down, and, of course, otherwise, anyone who opposed a tower in their backyard could claim that was bad for the community, and we would have no telecommunications system in the United States today. Of course, also, you know, you cannot take actions which would have the effect of prohibiting wireless service or discriminating among functionally equivalent wireless service providers. Ultimately, a service gap exists when we present evidence that that's the case, and we have done that here. Health and environmental concerns, it's well-settled law, both at the federal level and at KRS one hundred point nine eight six, cannot be considered, since that is preempted by the FCC in this realm. Also, of course, let's remember that these cases are different, because although you are acting to approve this facility, this is a utility under state law, and we are also regulated by the Kentucky Public Service Commission. Now, let's take, and this is about as expeditious a job as I've ever done, and so I'm kind of now kind of, I'm in the downswing here now. Periodically, there are surveys done at the federal level regarding how people communicate, and that's, of course, an important function of the FCC. At Tab G, you'll find a report indicating that seventy percent of all emergency calls in this country are now made from wireless phones. Now, hold on to that stat for just a moment, and let's go to this next one, Tab H in your hearing binder. Every year, once or twice, an allied group of federal health agencies, including the CDC and the National Institutes for Health, conduct comprehensive statistical studies of how people communicate. Now, the reason they have to do that is for public health agencies to know what's going on in our country. They have to be able to conduct randomized surveys. So, they have to know that they're getting a random sample when they are reaching out to people by phone. So, they do the most comprehensive review of this issue that's done in the country today. We have now reached a point where over one-half of American homes have only a wireless phone, no landline. And, as of December 2016, over sixty percent of all children live in households with only a wireless phone, no landline. Now, put that together with this last statistic that I cited to you, in which over seventy percent of all emergency calls are made from wireless phones. And you see that this application isn't just another type of application before you. This is the infrastructure that ties people, not just based on their Facebook postings, and for those of you who are my friends on Facebook, you know that's a frequent function for me, but it's also functions like, let's call the ambulance, let's call the fire station. So, providing high-quality, completely reliable, in-building coverage for every home in a community is Verizon Wireless's first objective, and we are spending billions with A B dollars in order to accomplish that objective. We only propose new facilities when we have to, because if we could co-locate, we would. It is cheaper, it is faster, and although it is always a pleasure to appear before this board in particular, we would not have to be here today if we were co-locating. We could do it as a matter of right with a building permit, correct? So, having said that, we're here because we have to be here, and it's not just a trivial application. This is quite literally the tie to emergency services for homeland security. We are communications now. There's not a day that goes by in which there are not fewer landline phones in this country, not slower growth rate, fewer phones. And we are rapidly moving to a day when it'll all be wireless. To help put this in kind of perspective and the job that we have on an ongoing basis, I've added a new slide with some fascinating statistics on how rapidly this industry is growing and the challenge that we have on an ongoing basis to meet our capacity requirements. In 2016, thirteen point seven two trillions of megabytes of wireless data was generated in the United States. If you put all that together, that would be roughly one point five eight million years of streaming HD video on your phone. Three hundred and ninety-six million mobile devices are in use in the U.S. today. That's approximately one point two devices for every American. Ninety-five percent of Americans own a cellphone, nearly, and, you know, and only seventy-eight percent of them own a computer. There are enough cars and motorcycles on the road to accommodate just seventy-seven percent of Americans. This is a completely ubiquitous technology that has become fundamental to our way of life and how we live our lives on a daily and hourly basis. There are now There are now 261.9 million smartphones in use today. That's nearly 80% of the U.S. population, which is, of course, driving much of that data usage needs that we have to deal with. And of course, this is, you know, aside from the impact that we have on other businesses who rely on this throughout our economy, we, you know, there are over 200,000 Americans who work for wireless carriers, and over 4.6 million jobs are supported by the wireless industry, including people like me. This is big business, and it is fundamental to our way of life, and we're glad to be able to improve our quality of service in this community. Tab K at the hearing binder is a proposed set of findings, if you need to consult them. A copy of this presentation is included at Tab L of the hearing binder. At the end of the day, you know, some people ask, is this something that's really needed? And the answer is yes, it is. And I hope the statistics that I've been able to cite to you today help put this in perspective. Companies like Verizon have a real challenge. Our challenge is to meet the needs today and tomorrow of our customers and the communities that we serve, not just business, not just personal, but there are emergency and life and death needs as well. We also have to do it in an ever-changing and highly competitive landscape in which new technologies are emerging constantly. It's our job to stay ahead of those technologies. And the fact that we are proposing this facility here today is a ratification of the growth and success that this community's had and that the policies that this planning commission has helped to foster to encourage that type of growth in this area. We have every other approval that we need. If we're fortunate enough to receive your approval, we're going to improve the quality of wireless coverage and capacity in this vicinity. If there are any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll be more than glad to try to answer them. If not me, certainly other more able experts are available.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Does that complete your formal presentation?
It does.
Okay.
Well, with one comment, although it was on one of the slides, we are prepared to accept the proposed binding elements and stipulations that staff prepared fully.
All right. Thank you, sir. With that, then, let me ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone that would like to speak in support of? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone here that is opposed to this application? All right, seeing none. We will now move into questions from the commissioners. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Fauci, got several down here.
These questions are more curiosity than technicality. If you aren't required that five-foot, or that light, why are you putting it on top?
We're not putting it on, and if I misspoke, it is not required, and there's no lighting.
In the application, you're putting a five-foot?
Lightning arrester.
Lightning arrester.
It's a lightning rod at the top.
Thank you. That's one. How large of an area will this tower cover?
I will call on our radio frequency expert to step up to the mic. This is Gordon Snyder. Gordon, if you would, identify yourself just for the record.
Gordon Snyder, 2421 Holloway Drive, Louisville, Kentucky. The area, the approximate radius this tower will cover will be probably about eight-tenths of a mile. It's a little bit lower, but it's designed for a specific capacity need. The surrounding sites are, right now, very close to their capacity limit, so it's designed to infill that and alleviate some of the capacity issues that we're experiencing.
So the taller towers mentioned earlier, the 300-foot towers, what kind of radius do they cover?
A lot of that depends on the antennas and the power you're transmitting at. You know, some of those towers belong to other companies that really can't speak for them, but depending on the terrain, what kind of ground elevation they're at in relativity to the surrounding area, some of those towers can cover up to a couple miles.
All right. And I've got one for, I think, Mr. Katz. I just would like to know, has?
Excuse me just a second, Mr., Fauci, just name and address.
Yes, my name's Glenn Katz with Realty Solutions, 381-
Say your last name, please.
K-A-T-Z, 3815 Stony Run Circle, Louisville, 40220.
Go ahead, Mr. Fauci.
In your experience working with cell towers, has it ever raised, having a cell tower in a certain area, ever raised the property values around it?
There are studies that point out that cell towers indirectly raise values because you've got increased services. You can just imagine without a utility, what, you know, without gas, electric, water, sewers are a great example. So in that respect, yes, they have a positive influence on general development trends.
Thank you. And just one more question. If this is approved today, when do you anticipate the tower being in operation?
I wish I could tell you. The way this kind of works is, as soon as all the approvals are in, then it goes into our budgeting cycle for approval. I would be surprised if this is not constructed within the next year.
Thank you.
Before I move into the next question, I did have a question here. The, maybe for Mr. Snyder, probably on the frequency. Will this tower be compatible with 5G? Well, you know, I would assume it'll be built as a 4G tower, but I know 5G is coming down the road. Could you address that?
Plain and simple answer is yes, but you also have to realize that there is no 5G standard yet. So when you see commercials talking about 5G, it's theoretical and it's testing possible applications which may lead to 5G, but right now there is no standard, but the ultimate answer is yes.
All right. And I had, let's see here, Mr. Finney down for a question?
I have a couple of questions and somewhat more comments. It concerns me that the radius of coverage in these towers is getting, or is not very high, and if you consider full coverage for the county, that's a tower every square mile.
If I could respond.
Okay.
I think I can address this. You're going to see virtually all applications for smaller radii, and in fact, existing sites, we are oftentimes reducing the radius of coverage on, and there's a very simple reason for that. The slide that I showed you of the phenomenal growth rates in data and voice, our challenge increasingly is not just to provide improved in-building coverage. If we serve too big of an area, then we max out the site, and you get blocked calls and data doesn't go through. Ultimately, the challenge is increasingly we have to split up existing areas, reducing the total area that's served because there is so much usage associated with it. And so as an example, in my practice doing applications in a number of states for different companies, it's been a long time since I have requested towers 250 or more. Increasingly, they're under 200 feet for that very reason, for every carrier. So intuitively, you would think, well, let's build this taller and serve more area. If you do that, then you max out capacity and the system shuts down. Gordon, was that oversimplified, but is that a fair assessment?
Courtney, come back up, please, sir.
So don't misunderstand, taller is not better necessarily. Go ahead, if you want to expand on that.
No, that's a fair statement, and a lot of times when we go taller with the new technologies, 5G will be even more restrictive, but we start interfering with ourselves.
Well, I guess my real concern is not that what's taller or what's shorter, it's-
Mr. Finney, make sure you don't testify.
It's the number of, you know-
You figure for, I won't say all of it, but a good portion of what we need for taller towers, where we need them, we'll build them. I've got a site up in Indiana that's probably going to be 300 foot tall.
Okay.
Just because of the location. But for sites like this one, it's a more targeted application because there is such a high data use in certain areas, and we've gone, when we've gone to the unlimited plans, we've seen our data usage just skyrocket. I mean, you know, you figure instead of people telling their kids to get on the Wi-Fi, you roll over to an unlimited plan, and it's, who cares about the Wi-Fi? Just go ahead and use it.
Any other questions, Mr. Finney?
Yes. When the average height of the cell towers in Oldham County was calculated, was the wave tower considered in that height calculation?
Yes, because it's an FCC-licensed tower.
Okay, and it's, but it is not 1,800 feet on cell tower. It is, was a TV tower, no longer in use as a TV structure, but it does have cell tower-
Everything that was FCC-licensed, we included in that calculation.
That upped the average quite a bit.
It did, but it doesn't alter the fact that this is still the shortest licensed tower if it's approved.
Understand, okay. Also, your 4.6 million jobs at cell tower, or that wireless communications are creating, I just wonder how many of those are in the United States, because the last person I talked to, I asked him where they were from, what state they were in, they said San Francisco.
Well, all of, I'll point out, all of that statistic, they're all U.S.-based jobs.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, let's see here, Mr. McWilliams.
Obviously, that person didn't graduate from Oldham County schools. Mr. Pike, how are you? Appreciate your-
I hope I'm still going to be okay after your question.
I'm sure you will be. Appreciate all the information, as always. Is there any correlation? Let me change that. Is revenue in any way a driver when you guys are considering short towers versus tall towers?
Re-
Okay, am I?
What?
Well, okay.
Expand a little bit, I'm not understanding.
From the standpoint of a provider like Verizon, looking down the road, would it be more advantageous for me from the position of revenue to put in more smaller towers versus fewer larger towers?
I don't see a correlation on that point. These towers are designed for the network requirement. There was one of the, one of Verizon's old ad campaigns said, you know, it's all about the network, and that's the case. Could we have built a taller tower here? Well, yes, but it's our task legally to request the tower that is necessary for this application and proposal. If we were asking for something greater than that, that couldn't be legally justified. So I don't see what that correlates, you know, in fact, if we could do it with fewer towers, that would be cheaper ultimately, because, I mean, this, just getting to this point, I mean, every one of those reports you've got involved testing, design, I mean, the price tag it gets, it takes for us to get here today, SHIP-O approvals, limited NEPA approvals, FCC approvals, the price tag just to get here today, it is very steep. So I suppose if there was a correlation, it would be, well, if we could do this with fewer towers, sure, we would. I mean, as an example, as part of this deployment, we're going to be co-locating on some other existing towers in Oldham County that we're not currently on, in other parts of the county, because when we can, because when we can do that, we will. It's always more expensive for us to build a new tower. But I don't see a correlation height versus number here.
Historically, do you have less opposition to the shorter towers or the taller towers?
I have given up trying to guess when I'm going to get opposition, and I'm not being flip. There are times I assume, well, there's no way anyone could be in opposition to this, and you show up and they're burning me in effigy out in the parking lot. And then there are other times, you know, I assume that there are going to be a lot of people, and you show up and you're it. So my personal view is I think this is more based on location and local neighborhood dynamics than it is based on height. You know, and again, we try, when possible, to deploy sites that don't require aviation lighting, because I have heard that a lot in public hearings over the years. But I think it's more driven by the nature of the community and the neighborhood than anything else.
My last question, Mr. Chairman. Do you ever compete for a site with another provider?
A specific site? I can't recall that happening.
It just doesn't happen?
If you think-
It's first come, first served?
Well, if you think about it, the odds are, as we would put it in Shepherdsville again, happening because individual companies issue search areas based on the unique requirements of their network. So in a, so there may be other search areas that are active in this community for Verizon or for AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or someone else, but the odds of those search areas directly overlapping at any given time are de minimis. And I think that's why I have not, I've never seen that, and it just makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think I am okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Horton, hand you down.
Yeah, thank you. Oldham County, of course, we're always concerned about abandoned property and abandoned structures and so forth. You can interpret this for me if you will. I read under Section F there, it talks about abandoned property, that the lessor has the opportunity, if I'm correct, the opportunity to, and the responsibility to do something with that tower, I guess, to cut it down, sell it for scrap, do whatever, whatever. And then in Page 5, on Item 12 there, it says that the company will ultimately be responsible for doing so if they leave the-
We are obligated, under both state law, also you have some local requirements as well, we being Verizon, or the cell tower company, to remove it if it's ever abandoned. I will note, in my practice now, which spans, based on a recent birthday, more decades than I care to readily acknowledge, that I've never seen that happen. I mean, once these structures go up, they tend to be used even more intensively over time. But we're obligated to do that under state law, and we're required to have provisions in our leases which mandate that we do that.
Thank you.
Which has been done here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One of the provisions to do that through bonding?
Your mic on, sir.
Yeah. You ever bonded?
You have a requirement that, you have a local requirement that we provide security, which we'll do in this instance.
Okay. Mr. Douglas.
Morning, Mr. Pike.
Morning.
You mentioned about all the filings that has to be done through the FCC rulings, and you mentioned NEPA, which is the National Environmental Protection Agency. I thought in the past that when you did some presentations before, some of those FCC filings were presented to us, that they have been completed. I didn't see any of those in here, except for the floodplain and the antenna structure and the FAA, but I didn't see anything for-
There's no requirement that we file those under your local regs or state law. Let me say that initially. If those were tendered previously, it was probably because the issue had come up based on opposition concerns prior to the public hearing that I wanted to address.
Okay, so is it appropriate that we ask you if, has there been any studies yet done on the national environmental side of that?
This site is all, you're welcome to ask. It's not a basis for decision today, but the answer is we have completed our limited NEPA in connection with this site and also the SHIP-O component of that.
And as far as you know, there's no national historical site in that general area?
No, we wouldn't be here today if we were still grappling with that.
And as far as I looked on here, I saw where the flood map was provided, so is that in Zone X? Is that what?
This is, all the floodplain is at the rear of this property, and we are outside of that.
Thought it was, that's why I'm looking at this map.
Okay.
Just wanted to put it on record here, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any additional questions? Mr. Finney?
Yes, the, in the presentation, you mentioned the landscaping around the base of the tower with the pine trees and hardwood mulch. Who is responsible for the upkeep on that?
The applicants are. And I will note, you can't see this, nobody's going to see this compound based on where it is. The only people who are going to see it are animals that might be in the field, based on the tree cover between the road and there, but we're responsible for doing that.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Any additional questions? All right, seeing none. We'll now move into the final statement of the applicant. Mr. Pike?
I mentioned it before, and I meant it sincerely, it is always a pleasure to appear before this group. I wish all of our applications could be ones where that there are this few people here to speak. And I can't guarantee that will always be the case, but I hope this group, when you consider our application, will take into account the extraordinarily densely populated area, and the fact that we were able to achieve this result here today in terms of a lack of community upset. We work hard at this, and we can't always achieve a result like this here today, but I'm glad we were today. And again, I want to offer my thanks to your planning staff for their efforts to help make sure that we had dotted every I and crossed every T. We're grateful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I would assume that completes your presentation and your application for the development plan on docket PZ one-seven-zero-two-zero. So, Mr. Urban, I'll call on you now to outline what's being requested on the approval of the development plan to construct a hundred-and-seventy-foot telecommunications tower on point-four-three acres.
In your staff report on page three, at the bottom, it's highlighted in yellow, item number four, after an applicant's submission of the uniform application to construct a cellular antenna tower, the planning commission shall, A, review the uniform application in light of its agreement with the comprehensive plan and locally adopted zoning ordinances, and B, make its final decision to approve or disapprove the uniform application, and then C, advise the applicant in writing. Those are the important components. On page five, you have our staff's view on compliance with the comprehensive plan, and you also have proposed binding elements back on, I'm flipping back and forth, but on page three. And those binding elements were agreed to by the applicant in their testimony this morning. The guarantee of removal in case of abandonment shall be irrevocable, and they do post a bond in relation to that removal. Item number two is any proposed lighting shall meet FAA regulations. We've heard testimony that there are no proposed lighting because it does not exceed the height limitation, so that is not a proposed binding element. And then number three, the antenna tower shall be maintained in either galvanized steel finish or be painted light gray or blue in color, if you want to include those in your motion. I would also suggest that if you are going to approve this uniform application, that you include the finding of facts under tab K in the applicant's packet that he, they submitted this morning dated June twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen. It is extensive, but it allows us to go ahead and, at the end of that, there's a place for the planning commission chairman's signature, because we are, again, required to notify the applicant in writing of our decision.
All right. You've heard the outline from Mr. Urban, the planner. Mr. Combs, is there anything you need to add?
No, except it does not appear that there is a...
Say again.
Proposed motion at this time.
Well, it would be really just either...
To assist the board, is...
Oh, yeah, yeah. It really would be either to approve the uniform application or deny. It would include the binding elements one and three on page three, and also, again, I suggest that you consider adopting the finding of facts submitted by the applicant under tab K.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard what's being requested. Do I have a motion on the development plan on docket PZ one-seven-zero-two-zero? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Horton?
I'll give this one a shot here. Excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to approve docket PZ seventeen, day zero-two-zero regarding cell towers, and including the three binding elements as noted.
Actually, two, one and three, because...
One and three.
Number two is irrelevant, there's no proposed lighting, or needed.
Corrected, okay, binding element one and two. Excuse me. This application does conform with the comprehensive plan and the zoning requirements, as well as other requirements in Oldham County and state regarding cell towers. The applicant has answered and fulfilled all of the issues regarding justification for the tower, and they itemized them, and it has to do with the search areas, with co-locations, with sub being the sole location available, the coverage requirements, in a very lengthy narrative that is noted in their application, regarding responsibility in their section F and item eleven and so forth, itemizes who is responsible regarding abandoned property. Note today that there was no opposition in the hearing regarding the tower, and there was no sign of opposition in, excuse me, in any other matter. And finally, there's been no evidence presented that there could be even a reason for denial of the application.
And what about the findings of fact?
Yeah, the finding of facts in regard to the notification by the, and signed by the chair.
What, do you want to include the findings of fact that's listed under tab K in our, in our book?
State that, Jim, if you would.
Well, there are three pages of finding of facts...
And they're titled finding of fact.
They are, under tab K, and it's in relation to the uniform application, where the applicant has submitted what they believe to be compliance with the comprehensive plan and the due diligence on their application.
And to include in that motion, the inclusion of the finding of facts regarding the application in total.
Under tab K. Under tab K?
Under...
Tab K is what you want to...
Okay, yes. Include that, if you would please.
All right. You heard the motion. Commissioners, Mr. Carter, I mean, Mr. Carter, Mr. Combs, is it...
Just one clarification. I think Mr. Horton meant to state the binding elements one and three as opposed to one and two.
I think he did.
He missed, he stated one and two.
He said all three, and I corrected him, saying only one and three.
But then he, he was thinking two when he said...
If that isn't correct, I will accept that, correct.
Okay. All right. Proposed binding elements one and three, so.
Correct.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the motion to approve the development plan on docket PZ one-seven-zero-two-zero? Any discussion?
Question?
All right, you have a question? Fox, if you would, let's do the vote, and this is a motion to approve the development plan. A hundred-and-seventy-foot telecommunications tower.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kling and Foose?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
All right. The development plan motion to approve on docket PZ one-seven-zero-two-zero has been approved on a vote of eleven to zero. So commissioners, with that, we'll take about a ten-minute recess to finish up with our last docket.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pike.
I had a quick time to get to cave sitting.
You look good. I smiled.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Take care with the case.
Yes, ma'am.